The August 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Burners Township Planning Board is now all four in place standing. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings of 1975, notice of this meeting to the planning board of the township Burners was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building in Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Burnersville News Whitney, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on January 19th, 2022, and was electronically mailed to all those people who had requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Burners Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 PM and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 PM. Ms. Kiefer, roll call, please.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor McNally, Ms. Mandu, Mr. Seville, and Mr. Landisinski have indicated they are unable to attend this evening. Mr. Baumann?
Here.
Mr. Crane?
Here.
Mr. Demersian?
Here.
Mr. Iorio?
Here.
Ms. Masterangelo?
Here.
Mr. Malik?
Here.
Chairwoman Pardici?
Here.
Mr. Banish?
Here.
Mr. Torriello?
Here.
Mr. Plaiver?
Here.
Mr. Schly?
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Kiefer is present. Madam Chair, you have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Seville, Deputy Mayor McNally, Ms. Mandu, and Mr. Landisinski, please?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll give it to Ms. Masterangelo and...
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Crane. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mean motion carries. Next item is the approval of the regular session minutes from June 7th, 2022. Mr. Crane was not there, so he cannot vote. Everybody else is eligible to vote. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
Motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Thank you, Mr. Demersian.
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumann. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2022 meeting. Mr. Baumann is the only one who was not there, so he cannot vote. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Demersian. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Malik. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a hearing for a modification of condition. Fenwick, Basking Ridge Homeowners Association, Inc., lots 7702, lots 10.01 to 10.05, 3, 6, 7, 10, and 11, Fenwick Place, modification of condition of approval, PB 11-011, PB 22-002. Good evening, Mr. Silver. Will you please start?
Good evening, board members and board professionals. My name is Michael Silver, and I'm an attorney at the law firm Difrensesco Bateman, Klinsmann Davis, Laird, and Flom, PC. I have the responsibility this evening of representing the applicant, Fenwick, Basking Ridge Homeowners Association, Inc. By way of background information, Fenwick, Basking Ridge is comprised of five single-family lots located on Fenwick Place, which is off of Valley Road. Subject property is located in the R4 zone, and the development consists of approximately 9.4 acres. Presently, construction at Fenwick Place is underway. It is being constructed pursuant to subdivision approvals granted by this board dating back to 2016, the preliminary approval, and 2018, the final approval. The application before you this evening is for the modification of a condition of approval. In the 2016 subdivision resolution, the applicant agreed to establish a 20-foot-wide tree preservation buffer easement along the perimeter of each of the five lots, where those lots would join existing residential lots. And that was for a means of minimizing the impact of the new development on the existing neighborhood. The applicant is requesting relief from condition 1A11, page 26 of the 2016 resolution, and condition 11B, page 39 of the 2016 resolution of approval that prohibits the construction of fencing and irrigation systems in the tree conservation easement. The applicant requests that the condition be modified to allow for fencing and irrigation. The main reason why the applicant seeks relief from this current condition is because the condition makes it difficult for property owners to maintain the easement area. The applicant recognizes that the aesthetic appeal of a proposed fence is a primary concern to the board, thus the applicant intends to provide an open-styled fence designed to minimize visual impacts on adjoining residences and to allow for trees to continue to grow in the easement area. The applicant would construct a fence that is dark in color, and it is proposed to be installed close to the rear of the property line. Should the board approve fencing and irrigation systems within the easement area, the applicant stipulates to complying with all the ordinance requirements relating to fencing and irrigation systems. Furthermore, the applicant stipulates that any fencing or irrigation systems installed in the easement area will not disturb any of the existing trees that currently exist in the easement area. I would respectfully request that the board note that the easement area is located entirely within the rear yard areas, where the township fence regulations are the least restrictive and where irrigation systems are, of course, permitted. So, absent the easement, Fenwick would be allowed to install irrigation systems and an open or solid fence with a maximum height of six feet and a minimum setback of at least six inches from their property line. Joining me this evening is Mr. Brian Crowitz. He is the president of the Homeowners Association and also a future Fenwick Place resident. Chairwoman Pardici, I would ask if I can introduce Mr. Crowitz and have Mr. Crowitz sworn. Mr. Crowitz should be able to provide the board with additional information pertaining to the proposed fencing and irrigation system, as well as answer any of the outstanding questions the board or the board professionals may have concerning this matter.
Okay. What we are standard practice is that we will swear in your witnesses, and we will swear in the board professionals simultaneously. So, at this point, will you please all stand, Mr. Torriello? We'll swear everybody in. Please, go ahead.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, if you could... Yes?
I just want to go on record that I visited the site.
Okay.
If you want to describe what I did there.
Yes, if you could.
Okay. This is site Sunday around noon time, and walked all the rear of the lots, the 25-foot easement on all five lots, observed the adjacent homeowners on the older subdivisions of the properties. I noticed on lot 1001 and 1002, which is the lots on the east side of the development, that on the adjacent property, there's existing bamboo, petro that was growing. On lot 24, that's not in the subdivision, that's in the north side, there're existing six-foot solid wood fence about 100 feet going from west... Going from east to west, and the balance of the property had a wired fence. As I made my way around to lot 1003, 1004, and 1005, which is on the east side, I observed the existing houses on Wedgewood Drive. It was quite a setback from the rear buildings to the property line, probably twice of what the subdivision is. I would approximate about 150-foot of buffer between the rear of the existing houses on Wedgewood Drive. I also drove Everett Green Place, which is two lots on the west side, to see if it had any impact. I also walked the two lots on Mount Airy Road to see the lots, how that view came into the existing subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else spoke of this property?
I did.
Go ahead.
Well, I did not walk the property like Mr. Crane, and I did not get very far in terms of driving because most of the road is unfinished and cordoned off by cones, but I did observe the 25-foot buffer for a large amount of trees. The way this development is designed is that it's a large setback from the road, and there's a huge cul-de-sac that the five houses are going to be around. So, again, that was noted in the resolution as well, but I could see the other properties through the trees still, and that's my thought.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a house?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Silver.
Thank you. So, can you just... Mr. Crowitz, would you mind explaining to the board the type of fencing you'd propose, height, material, colors?
Sure. I mean, I'm not familiar with appearing before the board for matters like this, so the first thing I would say is we're here because we're trying to enable the board's wishes for the property to be maintained. So, without answering your questions, we currently can put in a white fence, a solid fence. All of this easement is on our property, and the irrigation part of this wouldn't even need to be discussed, but there's no way, if you put in a solid fence, to irrigate those trees and to keep them alive, which is a deed and responsibility for each of those homeowners. If that fence goes up, and I would say every individual will have a right to put a fence up or not, but there's foxes that run through there, there's pools that are going to be built, there's pets and small children. Where the fence currently stands, you would have to either through your gate, et cetera, go basically onto your neighbor's property, and I don't mean the neighbors in the neighborhood, I mean the properties Mr. Crane is speaking, if they didn't already have a fence on the property line, to get to the back of those trees to maintain them. So, there's no way to cut them, there's no way to feed them, there's no way to cut them, irrigate them, if you put up a solid fence in front of them on your own property. So, what we're suggesting is, don't put up a white fence, don't put up a solid fence that you can see if you're these other neighbors. Put up a black, open fence, six inches on your own property, and then you can irrigate them from your property, not in the 25-foot easement. You can have yourself, your landscaper, your whoever, cut the trees, feed the trees, do what you need to do to keep the trees alive. That's why we're asking for the relief. You currently can still build whatever you want down the sides of your property, you would follow all the normal fence restrictions of the township. We just want for the back part of the property, going through those 20, 25 feet, to be able to put the fence on that side, so that you can access your trees from your property and not have to go around to take care of the trees.
Why can't you just have no fence and leave it the way it is? That's where I'm kind of... That's where I'm losing it.
Because I think you should have the right to put up a fence. You do now, and if you do put up that fence and you leave it where you want the fence, you either can't take care of the trees, or you're building a 25-foot channel in between all of the properties around the entirety of the property.
Who's going to be responsible to keep... Maintain the fence?
Each individual homeowner has to. If they don't want to put up a fence, that's their business, but I know there's, you know, the majority of residents there, you know, for safety reasons and other reasons, would like a fence, and they also know they have to maintain all of the trees.
So, you could have some houses with a fence and some houses with no fences?
I think that would probably be... You could do that now, like, I can't... If you were my...
Well, you could do that now in the space that's not part of the easement.
Right, but the...
So, why do you need a fence in the easement? What is the change?
So, right now, the back 25 feet of the properties is where the easement is.
Correct.
For everybody.
Correct.
You can put right up to the easement that fence, okay? But then, how do you maintain those trees? How do you irrigate those trees?
Well, that's you making that decision, right, to put the fence all the way up to that easement location. I guess I'm having trouble with this development, it's relatively new, it's still being constructed, and the board, six years ago, which is not that long ago, made a very specific, very specific finding, that there would be an easement here with absolutely no irrigation and no fences. So, I'm trying to see, what is the change circumstance? I mean, there was a huge public hearing, from what I can tell, and very specific detail. The board went to great lengths to codify this in the easement, and there was signed... The easement was signed by everyone as well.
So, none of those homeowners, none of myself, none of the builders, were part of that application?
I understand that, but also in the easement, it says it runs with the land, and that all future deed owners will be notified of the easement.
I think ultimately...
So, you obviously know about the easement.
Yeah, I think ultimately, you're actually hurting those other homeowners, not the people in this neighborhood, because if I put up that white fence, that solid fence, which I have a right to do, all of those neighbors are going to be staring at that white fence or that solid fence, and on top of it, which you're right, it is my right to do, how do I maintain those trees?
Well, you're required to. You're going to have to go out and water them then or something.
But it's just making it... It's making a problem, because I have to then go around onto those other people's properties to take care of those trees.
Well, why couldn't you install a gate or a double gate?
You absolutely can, but once again, you have to go through the gate. The easement basically fits the two sets of trees, and then you're on the neighbor's property to take care of the backside of the second row of trees, because the trees are all staggered.
And you said that with the fence, you can't irrigate. I'm just saying, if there is an irrigation consideration, why can't it be run under the fence, underground?
That's not allowed in the...
Well, you're asking for irrigation, right?
I'm saying the irrigation is irrelevant if you could put in an open fence on still your property, but that side of the easement, because then you could take your sprinkler system and you can hit all of the trees. You know, as Board Member Crane said, currently, about a third of these other houses already have solid fences and bamboo blocking this view. The other people there, for what it's worth, who I speak to regularly, I don't think they're going to want you going onto their property to cut back the trees and maintain them, and are sort of compromised when I did speak with some of the neighbors, was if we put in a black, open fence, they're sitting 100 feet in the other direction. It will allow us to maintain the trees. I mean, either way, everybody can still put up a fence, right? It's whether it's going 20 feet more in your property or the back, and how we can take care of the trees, because they're beautiful trees. I think some of the members here came out and met with me. We planted over 150 trees more than we were required to by this board for those neighbors, and it's still a lot of open space, and it will be for a long time. We're trying to plant in a tremendous amount of space. If I was that neighbor and I spoke to these people, I wouldn't want to see a solid fence or a white fence. I would much rather have a black, open fence and let me maintain those trees.
So, if the fence were placed where you're asking...
Yes.
If you were granted the relief you're asking for, if I understand what you're describing correctly, the homeowners would be gaining approximately 20 feet of additional usable backyard, because the fence would be moved sort of into the easement closer to the trees rather than be outboard and in the technical outside of the easement and in the backyard.
I mean, you were back there. That's not usable space. Mr. Crane saw it...
Yeah, I've walked and cut every one of those trees.
Mr. Crane saw it finished. It's completely mulched, and there's no area to play in. We've maintained it, as that first house got a TCO on Friday meticulously. It's got full mulch, every tree, it's beautiful. There's nowhere to walk in there. I mean, if you want to go walk in 20 feet of mulch, you know, you're more than welcome to, but I don't think... It's really about letting these homeowners take care of the trees the proper way and not going on other people's property, and you will inevitably build a channel around the entire property, and then they could put up a wood fence. I mean, I can't stop anybody else in that neighborhood from putting up any colored fence, any solid fence. What I'm attempting to do is put up, like I said, a black, open fence that will work and allow everybody to be happy.
Are you suggesting a fenced standard that would be agreed to by the homeowners that are subject to the association?
I am suggesting, for now, the one or two people I talked to were open to, and I guess that's the majority, because there's only five homeowners. I guess that could be agreed upon, yes. I mean, I think that's what we're asking for, so that we can make everybody happy.
How do you exhibit G to the declaration? It says lots 10.01 and 10.05 contain certain environmentally sensitive areas in which conservation restriction has been recorded. With the office of Park of Somerset County, there shall be no disturbance on these areas as the mean conservation is...
Those tree easements don't go into those areas, and they're not allowed to put fences into those areas. They have from all of Valley Road up to their side property line, which is all a different conservation easement. They're not allowed in there at all, so the fence isn't coming into play with that.
I'm still having trouble with the length at which a previous planning board went to really, in several, not just one place, but in several different parts of this, to note that they did not want specifically...
I think the problem, and I'm just being honest...
I'm just going to finish my comments.
I'm sorry.
...fences and irrigation systems, and that, again, it's not that long ago. I don't see any changed circumstances for us to overturn. It's almost like you're coming up on appeal and you're asking us for a change, and I just don't see... You're not telling me any changed circumstance, other than there's different homeowners, but it's clear that when you got a deed, you got notice of this.
I hear the question, and to be honest, if... I don't know if you were on the board at that time, because I was in the community. If you walked that property and you were part of that application, the way it previously looked, I totally understand the notes and the comments, but once this area got cleared and the dead trees removed, and now you walked the property like Mr. Baumann and Mr. Crane did, it looks... You had 11 acres or... it looks, you had eleven acres or ten acres of tree-ded forests. And now you have a very bare, okay, situation. So I totally get the comments that were made then. If you went out there and looked now, you would understand what I'm saying.
I did go out and look now, and there's still a, a lot of trees along the different borders. So what I'm asking you is, why are we changing what a planning board took a lot of time and effort to codify and had public hearings on, to just allow a few more feet of a fence? I mean, I'm having great trouble with that.
I think that, and you're entitled to your opinion, I think maybe the thought about maintaining these trees and where someone would eventually put up a fence wasn't the main focus of that board meeting. I think it was more worried about what people are gonna see. And I think now that you see what's actually there, a white fence there or a solid fence there, those neighbors are not gonna be happy. But if we put up a de minimis, like, black, open fence, you're going to be able to solve everybody's problems.
We would defer to the board's professionals, but per the reports, it seems as though that a fence that's open and dark in color would be considered to be de minimis in nature and would not substantially detriment any of the adjoining properties. The, the fact that in the previous resolution, that, that planning board took a lot of time to reach the decision to create this easement area and to not allow for fences and irrigation systems is recognized and understood. But what Mr. Crowitz is saying is that times have, have changed. The needs and desires of the homeowners have changed. And what we are asking for is a very de minimis modification of a condition that, again, poses no substantial detriment and could potentially be, could potentially offer a better impact for the adjoining neighbors since we're proposing an open fence. So a neighbor would not have to look at a solid fence.
Totally hear you if you were gonna put up a solid fence on that property line.
Well, I just...
Yes, I'm in the same place, because I understand that an open fence is obviously much better than a closed fence. That, to me, that's, to me, is synonymous. It's the issue of a fence versus no fence. As opposed to an open fence versus a closed. I was on that application, I think I'm the only board member here who was on that application. And Ms. Masrangelo is completely correct in saying that there was a lot of discussion based on a lot of public comment from the residents about the, the property and what their view is, what the property. And the board then came to this decision on the issue of the no fencing, et cetera, on the conservation easement. So that's, I don't, I agree with you on the type of fence, it's just the issue of the fence versus no fence. Do any other board members have any comments?
No, I'm still a little unclear, John, just give me a second. I'm, I'm still a little unclear on what the ask is.
Yeah.
Right, so, so a homeowner today could comply with the township's fence ordinance and place a fence on their side of the easement line within six inches of the easement line. What you're saying is, if you will allow homeowners to move the fence back into the easement on the other side of the line, the homeowners will agree that the fence standard would have to be open, airy, non-board-on-board. Or you, you, you would, you are saying, we're offering a, a fencing standard for the, for the subdivision that everyone would need to comply with. But in exchange for that, we would like to be able to move the fence back into the easement a little bit and, and, and move it a little bit more, I'm gonna say, landscape aesthetically, closer to the trees, keep it open so the trees can be irrigated, gate it where you need to, so it can slip in there for maintenance. But, but rather than a six-foot vinyl, white, board-on-board fence inboard of the easement, somewhere in the backyard, you'd like to do the other.
That's correct, and I believe...
I'm not sure it is, and I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, I'm trying to understand.
Yep, I, I got it. I think what I heard them say was that they want to be able to install that black, open fence, or a dark-colored open fence, six inches from the rear property line. So that would be on the far side of the conservation easement, not at some midpoint or through the conservation easement. Do I understand that correctly or not?
But I think that's what Gary said.
Okay.
No, so, so you're looking outboard of, of...
That's right.
You want that fence on the backside of the trees, between...
You currently can put it six inches on this side of the trees.
Right.
And I believe, just, I was gonna ask Mr. Schley, like, I'm pretty sure it's still usable property. You just, you can go in there, you can...
Just need, there's an easement for the trees.
Right, it's just, the trees have to be maintained. It's not like you're getting enough, you own that property anyway, it's your job to maintain that property. I wish I was here for the planning board. I just know that if I was a neighbor ten years ago, when this was before this board, and you were cutting down all of my backyard and putting these trees in, I wouldn't want someone coming putting a white vinyl fence on the property line. And I'm pretty sure that, that these trees were put in to try to give a buffer for view for these neighbors. But once the construction happened and ten acres of trees were cleared, okay, now we're trying to figure out, 'cause we planted all those trees now. We planted them early to try to provide screening for those neighbors. I'm also like, you know, the site super, I'm there every day, I hear from all of the neighbors concerns, et cetera. It's just very bare, and I, I fear and I know that people are all gonna put fences up, and then it's gonna be problematic for not only safety and all those other reasons. I think you're gonna get complaints, because, you know, people are gonna put up white, solid fence, white fences. The wood fence on the other neighbor property having nothing to do with this, they put up, because they didn't, they were grateful for all the trees, but they didn't wanna see the houses or the construction or through the trees. So I'm trying to remain the openness of what was intended by the board, but still provide my homeowners the safety and security and all those things, but also allow them to go in to that area wherever, maintain, prune, mulch, feed, water, all those things.
If, if the applicant previously did not take into consideration maintenance of the easement, which was to a fault, I understand that the board took careful consideration with that and put that in the 2016 resolution. But that's not to say that now that, a couple of years later, we're describing, oh, maybe there's a more practical way or an easier way for residents to maintain the easement and the trees in the easement, should not, should not prevent the applicant here this evening from receiving a modification. It's, clearly, the applicant is demonstrating that the homeowners feel as though there is a need to have access to that easement area to facilitate easier maintenance of the trees.
There's not much you can do there. You can't go in there and you can't prune. There's no cutting in that, in that tree conservation easement.
Well, you have dead limbs and they have to be taken off. These are three hundred trees or two hundred fifty trees. The deer have a tendency to eat them.
You have to read, you have to read that conservation easement, that tree buffer easement, so that you understand what activities are permitted and what, what activities are not permitted in that conservation easement.
What I'd also like to know is, you know, often with the fence comes a dog, dog lover I am. But, you know, you're also, that's an encroachment on the easement. That, there's, there's very specific language in here that tops rule should be removed, that, as Mr. Vanish said, it's a very specific easement. I'm having also great trouble with the fact that you're saying that the planning board couldn't foresee that there would be a need for an irrigation system or something to maintain these trees. I just don't think they were that wholehearted.
I was saying that the developer and the applicant at the time may not have put too much weight into that, but that the current homeowners and residents are taking that into consideration, which is why we're here this evening.
Well, I think they actually went to great lengths to say you can't put an irrigation system in there. But that was very important to them.
'Cause they didn't want it disturbed, right? Like, I've spoken to those neighbors, they don't wanna see a white fence or solid fence, which you're allowed to do. And the idea of the irrigation system or the fence was disturbing it, which is why I didn't come here and ask you for the solid fence. I think if you lived behind one of those houses, you would be much happier, from my take of the people I spoke to, with an open, dark fence and allow me to maintain the trees versus putting in a solid, six-foot-high, white vinyl fence down the entire property, which they're allowed to do, and you're gonna see forever. And that ruins the point of what was trying to be accomplished by the previous board. You know, either way, there's a fence going in.
It sounds a little extortionist to me, you know? That we're gonna put down a white fence if you don't let us do what we need to do.
It's, that's not how it's meant. Everyone's gonna probably put in a fence in their home, and they have the choice to do whatever they want, which is why we came and said, give us the language and the ability to put in the fence that would be least destructive to those neighbors. Well, and I understand everybody's opinion, but I'm telling you, those trees need a ton of water, okay? And they do need to be maintained in order for them to be successful. If not, it's gonna be a fight with the people behind, saying you need to fix your trees. And then that, and, you know, they're like, well, I'm trying to, but I can't water my trees. So I just wanted me, you know...
Well, you can go in there and water it. You don't have to install an irrigation system to water the trees in, in the conservation.
With all due respect, there's a hundred trees on every person's property. In order to water those by hand would probably take your entire weekend. I mean, you would need twenty minutes on a hose on each tree.
Well, I mean, you could put a sec, please, just bear with me for a second. You could put, you could lay a soaker or a series of soakers on the ground and irrigate that way. You don't have to hand carry water to water these trees.
The trees are literally planted every so many feet apart and staggered. You would have to then go and move that soaker sixty times.
Mr. Schley, were you here for this hearing?
Yeah.
Can you weigh in on what the rationale was for this language? And that the board went through so much?
Well, I know in prior applications with similar easements, we had applicants coming back to the board and asking this very question. So it was brought up, let's answer the question now. Specifically, are fences allowed in the easements? And irrigation systems got lumped in there as another common disturbance that would be there.
So it was a proactive group by the board in response?
It was, it was the board nailing down, let's be clear about it. And, and at that time, the, the applicant, I don't remember them putting on much of a fuss about it.
I don't remember either.
Yeah, I think they were, their intention all along was to, to flip the subdivision approval and not to be concerned about actually building it out and worrying about what this applicant's worrying about. But it was, it was to try to avoid, or make it more clear of a situation as to what, what's allowed in the easement or not. But I, I, it, it makes some sense to me what this applicant is saying about, you had someone who was planning to get a subdivision approval, just wanted the approval they were gonna have to deal with.
So this is a different...
Are there any, I'd like to hear from other board members, Mr. Crane, please?
I'd just like to ask a couple of questions.
Pardon?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. Familiar with the black, open fence on Lot twenty-four, the northern lot on the eastern side? That back corner, there's that black, open fence. Are you familiar with that?
The one that the ivy's growing on?
Yeah, oh, it sits back...
Behind Lot ten oh three, actually, yes, I am.
Would that be the type of fence you would...
I would think more of a nicer, black, open aluminum.
But that is, in my mind, that's, that's pretty upscale.
We could defer to the board's professionals. We, we would be...
I'm not a fence expert, I just know, for what it's worth, there is a problem there, and I wanna take care of the trees. And I also do have a relationship that's very nice with most of the neighbors. So I'm just trying to do...
We would defer to the board's professionals on the board. If there's a specific, dark-colored fence, style in mind, we would obviously agree to comply with that.
The, the other option of not putting a six-foot vinyl fence on the inbound side of the property, the homeowner could put additional landscaping where that fence would go, would that be...
Yeah, but isn't the homeowner allowed to put a fence in within the easement on his own property?
Yes.
On the edge of it, Mr. Demergian.
Right.
On the interior side of it.
I understand that. And what the applicant is trying to do is to avoid an ugly white fence and keep all the neighbors happy.
And also take care of the trees.
And, and maintain the trees.
Yes.
To put a soaker hose on a couple hundred trees, I bought the property, we, Gary counted it, it's just, it's unreasonable. It's not gonna happen, so...
And Mr. Crane, do you have any more comments?
I just, so, so where that fence goes, you, you would have the option of putting some smaller plants there and would also give you a more spacious rear yard. These, these people already take a twenty-five feet of the seventy-five foot setback, so they really only have a fifty-foot, roughly a fifty-foot setback. I, I think that, from a planning standpoint, I think the homeowners would have more enjoyment, would be able to put additional landscaping where that white fence would go, or some type of fence on the inbound. So I, I would see that as an advantage, would you see that as a advantage?
Absolutely.
As a site superintendent, how long have you been a site superintendent? I've worked with John Rocker, who's the primary developer there for ten plus years. So what, what I see here is the perpetual care for this landscaping that might have been overlooked. This means forever that this landscaping has to be taken care of. So some of these trees could get fifty, seventy-five feet, thirty-six inches wide, some of these pine trees. To try to take that tree out, grind the stump down with a fence in there, you're ripping these fences out. I think it's, in my view, this is a hardship to the residents to maintain this. I think the, I think having the fence on the outbound should allow the trees to grow further into the property. It will somewhat restrict the, the overgrowth into the existing neighborhood properties, which have, you know, especially on the, on the, on the, I'm gonna say, on the, on the east side, there's, there's quite a bit of setback there in this landscape. So I, I really don't see the, the objection of, visual objection of a black fence on them. I'm gonna use my forty-five years as, in the construction business, as, as, as my basis for that opinion. I, I think potentially the homeowners could put some ivy in there, so the ivy could grow on, on the fence. So I, I think after a while, you're not even gonna see those fences, it's, it's gonna be overgrown. I think the real problem...
Mr. Crane, in, in your comments right now, where is the fence?
The fence is on the, the, the rear property line between the, the existing development.
Okay, so, so, so in a conforming location, six inches off of the rear property line? That's the, that's the location of the fence that you're describing right now?
The proposed fence.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just wanna...
That's okay, I'm, I'm not a great communicator, I get, I got things built in my life, but it was hard communicating it. So that, I, I just think that's gonna blend in with all the veg, with all the new evergreen trees, especially the, the green giants. But you're, you, it, it's, I, I just, I, I don't wanna fault the board, but usually you would have a two or three-year maintenance on landscaping, and, and the homeowners are done, like most developments. It's not, this is like a cemetery. You're, you're taking out seventy-five foot, seventy-five foot trees, you're trying to maintain it. Who knows what type and base of species you need to get to to take it out? Like I said, you have a base of species on Lots ten oh one and ten oh two adjacent property on Lot twenty-three. I just, I, I think these homeowners should be able to, we put this stringent, the board put the stringent for life to maintain these fifty, seventy-five foot trees. And when they die, you gotta take them out, you gotta get grinders. This is, this is, I just think you're gonna end up, from a planning point of view and from a homeowner's point of view, a much better situation. I think you're gonna have security for the existing property owners and the new property owners. The, the Lot twenty-three is two seven, one, two, seven, six, Mount Harry Road. That house is about thirty feet off the property. If I'm a homeowner on the new property, ten oh one, ten oh two, I would want some type of fence there, at least to try to reduce the amount of bamboo going into my lot. You know, these lots surrounding the development have seventy-five foot setback, that lot does not. So I, I, I hear what the chairman and the vice chairman are saying. Just because the board did it doesn't mean that it's, that it's an absolute right thing to do. And times have changed, and I, my big thing is, how do you maintain this? This isn't small trees, this is, I just took a tree down, you know, thirty-six inch pine trees. These, these pine trees, evergreens go gigantic in this town, so... I, I, the other thing I noticed on the, the lot that's mostly developed, I think the one that you just said, yeah, the CO, when you look at, from Wedgewood, those, those junipers are, are, are my junipers, I call them green giants. They're already ten, twelve feet up, they're, they're covering the first story already. So I think they're gonna blend in with, with the, with the dark fence. You're really not gonna notice, I mean, what's the objection of seeing a fence, an open fence toward a dense tree line that has both vegetation on both sides of the property? I just, I just, I... I just, I just, I think.
And I think I understand more clearly now, and I think to Mr. Crane's point, you know, the perpetual easement requiring maintenance. I, I think we have to recognize human nature. Out of sight is out of mind. If you put a fence between the homeowner and that easement, tree easement, that tree easement is going to fall out of mind, sight, and care over time. If it's, the fence is on the other side and it appears contiguous to my property or a homeowner's property, they're more likely to look at that and say, that's mine, it's my responsibility, it's getting overgrown, I need to go in there and take care of it, to the extent that behavior is permitted in the easement. I need to do something with it.
There's also, there's also human nature to expand the backyard.
Of course. Get it as far back as you can.
As you can get it. And if you have a fence and you have three homeowners later, they're going up to the fence.
Right. And, and you, you, who, so, so, you know, I, I, I agree with Mr. Crane. I, I think there's a practical advantage to locating the proper aesthetic on the outboard side of the easement and allowing that tree line to connect to the homeowner's property better and, and foster maintenance and care. Inclusion, not excluded from their property, included in their property, so they're looking at it and, and, and taking care of it.
Okay. I think I'd like to get a feeling of each board member about the following. Uh, how you feel about putting a, a condition of approval of the type of fence, if we would agree to approve this, the type of fencing that could be constructed in, in the easement.
Madam Chair, before you conduct that poll, may I just make a comment? Uh, I think Mr. Plebier just brought up a, a point that should probably just be arrest, or addressed. And, and that is, define that limit. Is there something visually at the in-board side of the conservation easement so that there isn't that tendency of the homeowner to gradually take a little bit more and more of the conservation easement and incorporate it into the backyard up to the fence line? If, in fact, the board moves in the direction of allowing the fence to be installed six inches off the rear property line, which would normally be the case if there were no tree buffer easement or no conservation easement there. In, in other words, what Mr. Plebier, I think, was pointing to was the fact that, and, and we see this commonly when there are conservation easements. If they're not adequately marked visually for the homeowners to understand where that line is, they will go over that line over time. And they will appropriate a, a portion of that conservation easement as backyard area. And, and so, and so as, as you're considering the possibility of modifying this condition or recommending to the governing body that the condition be modified, I, I, I would just like to amplify the point that Mr. Plebier made, because I think it's an important one.
Well, what do we do then to make sure that that encroachment is, doesn't occur?
Posts and markers. Posts and markers, at, at regular intervals, three feet above grade or something to that effect.
Some markers?
Yep. Markers on posts, three feet above grade.
These have to be marked. Easement typically has to be marked in our township easement.
If it's a, if it's a wetlands easement, if it's a non-disturbance wetlands easement, environmentally sensitive easement, not, not something like a.
Not, not that's, not this is.
I, just from my past experiences as a land development manager, the, these green giants and, and evergreens, they're gonna eat the twenty-five feet up. You're not gonna have to worry about people going to easement. That's gonna eat all that.
Just offer that comment for your consideration.
The green giants go fifteen foot.
To, to, to a lesser extent, though, to, to a lesser extent, the same could be said of adjoining property owners. My neighbor's fence is on the other side of those trees. Those trees connect to my backyard and the neighbor on the other side could slowly begin to claim some of that easement area to the extent it grades well into their property. I mean, it's, 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 you know.
We don't normally see that, or I don't normally see that happening in the field with these conservation easements that planning boards place. But I agree with you. That could conceivably happen. Absolutely.
But I understand the tendency would be for the homeowner to kinda work their way in here.
Chairman, I just wanted to comment, because I'm not sure if you've been out there yet. The property is already defined, because this board has a landscaping committee that some of these members came out and saw, and they defined where every tree goes.
I saw it.
Okay. So where the start of that twenty-five feet is, within what is recommended by the landscaper for growth, the tree is planted. So there's no way to encroach upon that tree, because those trees are already planted and in there, right? So within two feet of that, the tree was planted, right? So those twenty-five feet, two feet or whatever, four feet this way, you have your first tree. And then the property line, you stagger the next tree. And then this property line, this tree. So the two sort of lines are, call it four or five feet off of that twenty-five feet. And that's where the trees go all the way around the entire.
So Mr. Crowe, you're saying that when the trees mature, the property owners will not have the opportunity to encroach in the easement area?
As Mr. Crane said very shortly, not, we're not talking ten years, we're talking almost immediately.
Yeah, which, if I could state, that's pretty much the case on the, the lot ten oh three. Those junipers are, the green giants are already ten feet. Like I said, they get fifteen foot wide. They grow very well. It's, it's gonna be, you know, if you had a fifty foot easement, I could see it. But you have a twenty-five feet, that's gonna be one wall of massive evergreens in there. That's gonna eat that whole twenty-five feet up. So as far as concerned about people using that, they can't use it. They can't put any structures in there. The only thing they could do is possibly walk through there if they can push the trees up.
Well, the things, the kind of things we see are sheds.
Well, the sheds aren't allowed, Mr. Banish.
I understand that. And, and maybe the homeowners understand that too, but that doesn't prevent them from doing that. It just commonly happens. That's the only point I wanted to make. The board will do with this issue whatever it does with the issue. It's just, we just wanted you to be aware that it is, it is commonly found to be the case.
So, so are you suggesting any easement we have, we put a fence to keep people from putting a fence into the easement?
No, no. What I suggested were visual markers at about three feet of height.
I agree. That's where I was going. That's why I asked you.
Okay.
Yep. That, that was all I was suggesting.
How does the board feel about Mr. Banish's suggestion of the markers? Mr. Demerjian?
Uh, I'm gonna say that although it's a great idea, at, at some point we have to limit what we can control. I think the, the, the amount of trees that have been out to the property, which I, I should have mentioned earlier when you asked if we'd been to the property. I was there a few months ago, along with Gary and yourself, Madam Chair, to do the landscape inspection. And the applicant installed many more trees than were required by the, the landscape plan. So getting back to your question, well, I think it's a good idea. Uh, I'm gonna say I'm not for adding signs to indicate there's a conservation easement.
Okay. Mr. Crane?
I, I wouldn't have problems. That's pretty standard in the, the industry. I have, I would limit it to maybe one per lot in the Meadow Beach lot. Just the four by four posts.
So you're a conditional yes or something? Okay. Ms. Masfrangelo?
Uh, I would agree with Mr. Crane.
Mr. Paul?
I, I would agree with Paul. I, I, I think it's a great idea, but I think that, that, I believe the easement will be self-limiting, if not now, in a very short period of time. And that a temporary marker would be that for a temporary period of time and then eventually find its way back to earth. So I, I would just say, you know, if, if we're going to allow the fence on the other side, let's let the easement limit itself with the density of the trees.
Okay. Mr. E. Oriol?
Yeah, I agree with Paul as well. Uh, I think the, you know, the easement is defined by the trees. I don't think there's really much more we need to do with that.
Okay. Mr. Ballin?
I agree with what Mr. Ballin said.
All right. And I, I think I'm gonna say that I don't see that the markers wouldn't do much if we have those thicknesses. So, okay, we're gonna say that we will not have the markers. But now we have to figure out, do we want any conditions if we deem this to be approved?
I would just like to know, have you talked to all, most of the neighbors? Are there any neighbors here that are?
Well, remember, we're still in here and so we, we got to finish your testimony and questions of the board and then we'll open it up for questions.
So have you talked to the neighbors?
We, the neighbors in this, in my development or the neighbors behind?
The surrounding.
I've talked to some of the neighbors. I saw, I don't know their all names. I explained it and to one or two of the members on Wedgewood and the people behind me. They all have my, a lot of them, not all of them have my cell phones. I would say at least five of them.
But you haven't specifically said we're thinking about putting a fence.
No, we've had discussions and people all got notices and a couple, one or two of them asked me questions about it. You know, no one, I saw someone who knew the hearing was tonight.
We will, I mean, we will, I know there are people in the audience who want to speak, so.
Sure.
But I would like to get through the conclusion of your testimony. And I, we still need to know, we still need some, I need some direction from the board of whether we are gonna, we want to consider a, a condition if we deem it to be approved about the type of fencing, et cetera. So would anybody like to make a recommendation on that?
I'll, I'll make that recommendation. I would.
Yeah.
Go, go ahead. Cut you off. Is there anything else?
No, go ahead.
Sorry. I, I would make a recommendation that the fence be dark in color, black or bronze. And be at least six, fifty to sixty percent open, which wouldn't be a hard standard. Probably it'd be closer to that fence that I mentioned on lot twenty-four. It's probably sixty-five, seventy percent open. So that, that's the fence I, if we have conditions, obviously it couldn't be more than six feet in height. That, that would be my recommendations. And then if we get to, I guess the next round would be the irrigation. I also have a comment on the irrigation, but it's a statement of the fence.
So what do we, yes?
One question maybe for the applicant. Is there considerations for future pools with the, with the fence, try to be compliant with pool code? Or would you have another row of fences? Cause I know there's scalable pool code.
I think if somebody wants to fence in their entire yard, from my understanding of the rules, that would.
But I mean, is the, is the fence you're thinking now, that's gonna be potentially in the easement, would it meet pool code?
I think it should, yes. I mean, I'm most worried about the fence. I like the fence. Mr. Crane's describing. My only problem with that fence is it's not a very sturdy fence. Oh, it's leaning.
The aluminum fence?
I would want an aluminum solid.
That's what I was thinking. I'm sorry.
A what?
It's aluminum fence. Basically, you have the rots maybe three quarters to half an inch and you have a four inch space between.
Yeah, just.
It's the four inch aluminum fence. Should we say that?
I don't know. Is that spacing between?
But I mean aluminum fence. Do you want that?
I assume you've put aluminum fence.
Yeah, a black aluminum fence. So I don't know the exact spacing, the different colors.
They could, they could get a detail. If the board, if the board takes the approval action, they could get a detail.
Yeah, and to minimize the amount of fencing on a property, it could be, it can meet pool code. It can't be scalable.
Yeah, something that meets pool code, that's black or bronze, that's aluminum, um, you know, would be, would be fine.
Let, let me just interject. Are you just looking at the perimeter or the, the, the property lines, the twenty-five foot? Would you wanna fence in that area or just the perimeter? Because without the fence in between the twenty-five foot barn, wouldn't do you any good with the pool.
Yeah, you would have to do the entire.
So, so that's, that's what I'm asking.
So side yard, side yard fences as well? Is that what you're asking?
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is, is that what you're requesting?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would, would make sense also, right?
Well, you could do the fence, you could do the fence around for the pool.
You're, you're already allowed to put them up on, on the side yard. It's just.
Well, are any of these cul-de-sac houses, do any of these cul, do any of these cul-de-sac houses have what we consider front yards?
Front yards?
Well, you know how you have.
Yes.
They are.
They have, they all have a front yard.
No, I meant what, sometimes the side yard is, there's some situations where side yard, no, it's actually a front yard.
Yep.
All, all of the easement area is in a rear yard.
All of them?
Yeah, none of, none of, none of them have a funky layout where it's deemed to be something other than a rear yard.
So, I'm still trying to figure, if we have a condition, we have to say what the condition is. So right now I've heard dark in color, fifty to sixty percent open, aluminum fence, six feet.
Pool requirements.
We're all over the place.
It's gotta meet the pool, pool code.
That's, that's consistent with that type of fence.
Consistent describing one fence. Right.
Pardon?
That would be consistent. It's a description for one type, for one fence.
So, so it would be dark in color, bronze or black, aluminum material, a minimum, John called it out.
Fifty, fifty to sixty percent open.
Fifty percent, fifty percent open, which is, you know, you can find it in spec book somewhere.
No more than six feet high.
No, could be, could be more.
It could be more.
It should meet the pool code.
Well, you have a fence ordinance in town. So, so are, are you trying to grant relief from the height limitations?
No, six foot, six foot would be max.
Okay.
Six foot would be the max.
Six foot would be the max.
Ooh, yeah, okay.
We should probably specifically say some closer gate for the perimeter.
Yeah, you gate it. It should be.
Cause I think it should meet the pool code.
And, and there would be no, is there any trees and putting in these fence?
No, that would have to be part of the agreement. I, I didn't even really think about what they were saying. There would be two sections where obviously besides the back, you would need to connect to the side yard, but you wouldn't be able.
If, if the homeowner were to fence the.
The entirety of the perimeter, correct. So you would need that relief, right, as well?
What relief?
In order to turn the fence perpendicular and remove it through the easement, should a homeowner decide they wanna fence the entirety of it, right? Like if somebody puts in a pool.
Right.
You either ring the pool or you're ringing the whole property.
Right.
If partial, portion of the fence is on the backside of the easement.
Right.
But the pool, it must come through the easement by definition in order to create that, for compliance. So that would be part of the relief that they're asking.
Is that proposed only along the side property lines?
Yes.
I would think that would be, all we would grant would be.
So would we, what, the pool code? How do we say that?
No, it would have to be along only the side property lines.
Yes.
What do we say? Along the?
Six inches from the side property line, right?
Yeah. Well, any, any fence in the easement has to be six inches from the property line. That's it. Whether it's side or rear property line.
No more.
Yeah, that, that would two fences on that twenty-five foot.
Mr. Schley, what is the reasoning for why they would not put an irrigation, uh, system or allow one in this?
I think that's just a land disturbance thing, to, to, to install it and then service it or whatever. It's just a.
But if you, you don't need that if we're allowed, if the fence is moved, that we can withdraw the irrigation issue. Cause now you can irrigate from this side of this, they shoot twenty-five to thirty feet.
Okay. Well, that would be helpful.
Is there an issue with an easement being inside of a gate that's supposed to meet pool code? No issue with that?
So what am I hearing so far? This is not my area expertise.
Six foot fence.
Dark in color, aluminum fence, fifty percent open, meets the pool code. Obviously, a height maximum of six feet. And what about the side yard?
Why don't you say it?
Well, it just has to be within six in, six inches from the property. Not within, not within six inches.
Within six inches?
The, the requirement, the setback requirement is six inches.
So it must be six inches from the side property.
In this case, the requirement will be six inches from the property line, whether it be rear or side.
Property.
Because we don't want the fence.
And that, and that fifty percent is, and, and it is an at least fifty percent open standard.
Minimum.
It's not, it's not a requirement that it is fifty percent open.
I would just put a caveat on the six inch setback, that if, if in that six inches, there's a giant tree and the fence needs to go around the tree to give discretion to the township engineer to go around the tree. But only to, you know, to vary from that six inches only to avoid.
That would be for both easement, Dave, the, the rear line and the sideline, the bump out around the tree.
Yeah, but could, could you by default just come in?
Well, I, the, the, the condition would be, you, you have to set the fence six inches off the line. So if they go off the line, you know, further than six inches to avoid a tree, they're in violation of the new condition.
So they'll have something.
Just trying to provide a, some flexibility there.
Is it no less than six inches?
No, 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 no.
No.
It's gotta be six inches. Right on the dot, six inches or thereabout.
So fence has to be six?
The, the minimum ordinance requirement is six inches from the property line.
Right.
So it's gotta be at least six inches. In this case, I think what the board wants is exactly six inches. So it's not coming further into the easement. It's as, it's as on the outskirts of the easement as possible while meeting the ordinance.
But, but if you have neighboring properties that both want fences and the easement has to have the same fence as what's going along the back, you wouldn't want double fences next to each other, a foot apart.
I agree. I agree. And I think how the condition is written in the recommendation should be that in the event that there are two adjoining homeowners who are using this as their pool fence, because I can believe that they're gonna be next door neighbors with pools, you should figure out how you wanna deal. You should figure out how you wanna deal with that, whether you want it allowed to be installed on the property line and that's the recommendation.
I think the construction code, the construction code official can get a waiver from the code, from the pool code for that. You used to have to be required to put your own fence up on your own property. That's why I saw a lot of back-to-back fences for pool codes. But now the code official can accept a waiver.
I don't think, our code official's not gonna grant a waiver.
And if he's not gonna grant the waiver, then.
Pool fence has to be on your own property where the pool's located. I wouldn't go there. I'm pretty sure it's not.
So you're putting in that situation, you're gonna have back-to-back classes now?
Go ahead.
Same as the twenty-five point span.
I don't think you're gonna have this in this neighborhood because as Dave knows, we planted trees as well on all the property lines in between the homeowners. So you would only have the back-to-back situation perhaps on the back of the property. No, but if you put a pool in, if you have a pool and your next door neighbor has a pool.
Side to side.
So in between the two houses, besides the trees that we planted around the back, there's trees that are going down the, this neighborhoods. They're not required, but they are property lines. So you wouldn't be able to, to do that.
So you're saying that the side yard has trees, so it's not an issue?
Correct.
At the twenty-five foot, there'd be a twenty-five foot eas, uh, twenty-five foot fence, uh, butting the, the rear yard.
Right, and the side yards have, are ready, they're.
So are you gonna be able to run a fence six inches along that side property line as it comes in from the rear?
We're gonna have to figure out where to plant those trees to make it work.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let me try once more.
But can I just clarify one thing before, before you go? Mr. Schley, were you just saying the six foot, um, six inches in the easement area?
Yes.
It must be six inches from the property line in the easement area. However, once it goes, once it's beyond the easement area, it no.
I'm not talking about any restriction once it's beyond the easement area.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, it's gonna be dark in color, it's gonna be aluminum, it's have a minimum of fifty percent open, it will meet the pool code, six foot maximum, six inches from the property line. But the township engineer will have the discretion if that six inches is blocked by a tree to go around the tree. Is there anything else? I will do a straw poll on this. Anything else you wanna add?
No, I would just like clarification on the, if the two, two neighbors next door to each other both have pools, are we gonna have two fences within.
Yep.
A foot of each other?
If, 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 if that's how they choose to put the fence around their pool.
Right.
Right?
And there, Paul, you would only force that condition in the easement. Cause in the twenty-five foot easement, you must place the perpendicular fence six inches.
Right, okay.
From the property line. Once you get on the inside of the easement, you can, anywhere you want, put a job.
Whatever you want.
Like the rest of the town already has to deal with.
The rest of the town has to deal with, right?
Fair enough.
And the applicant's saying there are trees on those property lines, so it's very likely that fence is gonna.
Yes, Mr. Crane, I'm trying to do a straw poll.
Hey, Joe, hey, Joe, you glad you said yes to this?
Just, just.
Fat tisles by fire, right?
Just before you do the final, I think we're there, almost there. To get exact, a fence exactly six inches, I mean, I think we need to give a little flexibility within six inches of the foot, Dave.
That's a field call. That's, the, the engineer's gonna make that call.
We need reasonable language.
I, I don't think you can say exactly six inches because it's gonna be, it's gonna be an inch off one hand or another.
We, we, that, the zoning officer understands that, the engineering department understands that. We don't require a final survey when somebody puts up a fence.
Okay.
Right, I think.
I'll withdraw that. I'll withdraw that.
Okay, we're gonna have a straw poll on this. So we kind of wavered a little bit. Okay, do you wanna hear it again?
Sure.
Okay, let it rip. Dark in color, aluminum fence, at least fifty percent open, six foot height maximum, meets the pool code, six inches from the property line. If the tree happens to be at that six inches, discretion will be given to the township engineer to move that fence around appropriately. Mr. Malick, are you, how do you feel about this condition?
I think it should be allowed.
You're fine?
I'm fine.
Mr. Aiorio?
I agree with it.
Mr. Ballen?
Yes.
Mr. Estrangel?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Demer.
Yes.
And I, yes. Okay, we still have some things to do, Mr. Silver. We have to go over, Mr., uh, before we have, oh, no. Let's first, no, let's go through the, um, memos.
Your public comments?
Sure, just one, one thing. I just wanna get on record, part of this condition would be you're not allowed to put irrigation in the easement.
Right.
Agreed.
Oh, irrigation not allowed?
Not allowed.
In the easement?
He withdrew that.
Yeah, they withdrew.
Okay, no irrigation, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dan.
All right, now we have to go through the memos and then I would like to have public questioning and then we're going to go to public comments. So we have a memo from Mr. Schley and we have a memo from Mr. Vanish. The fire officials had no issue. There was something from the environmental commission, I, I think.
Yes.
Um, I can't, gotta try to find it right now. So, um.
It, it was.
Mr. Schley, have all your concerns been covered in your memo?
I'm looking at my July twelve, twenty twenty-two memo. Some of the comments are just factual. Number four was requesting the details that we just thoroughly went through.
Oh, yeah.
About the fence, um, and number six was also covered. Number seven talks about amendments to the, um, the declarations to covenants restrictions that needs to be amended and the conservation easement needs to be amended and that's all. The conservation easement amendment is subject to approval by the township committee, um, and also for the board's consideration, if the board does end up approving something that would require an amendment to the easement. The board may want to recommend in its resolution to the township committee that they do amend the easement so they understand what the board's intent is there.
Okay, so they were part of, or should we vote on that tonight? Is the, is any approval saying that this is, we're approving a recommendation to the township committee?
Yes, just so it's clear to the committee that your intent is to allow, is for them to do that.
Okay. All right.
Modify the condition and recommend to the governing body, right?
Approve the condition and recommend it to the governing body, okay.
That's right, those two things.
And number eight is just the applicant intends to comply with all other conditions of approval and everything else. And just one other comment, based on the, uh, the proposal today and the whole idea of not having a solid white or vinyl or any type of solid fencing, what's, what is the proposal in that regard? The board would be approving, uh, the, the, uh, open black fence along the property line. One of the reasons, I assume, to avoid having that six foot high white vinyl fence is the proposal not to have a, allow six foot.
We should probably say that there's.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I don't wanna force people to have to put the fence on the property line. I think they're going to, but I would be fine with saying it has to be black, aluminum, fifty percent open. I forgot the other ones.
But do we say specifically?
I'm talking about the fences that we don't want.
Yes.
Are you proposing to not allow those in the development?
Not allow solid fence?
Yes.
Is that something that you would, you would agree to?
Yes.
So that you would agree to this type of fence for the rest of the development is not?
Black, open, fifty percent.
So there's no.
Should we put that in the, the.
Well, we can, we can make, we can make the applicant make that an amendment to the bylaws and the, whatever, cause it's association, right? So make that a condition.
I don't know if you wanna make it this specific fence, but just to prohibit solid fences or, or solid fences over four feet, if somebody wants to put like a little picket fence.
So.
You know, in the backyard or something.
I think we said the type of open fence, so you're saying we should say that.
I don't think they're going that way.
No.
Uh, not, not to amend the HOA documents.
No.
No, I don't.
So should we put in there?
What, do you think they should be amended?
A solid fence is prohibited?
Whatever, I, I'm suggesting that, uh, I, I think the, the trade-off here is that the board doesn't wanna see, for example, a, a six foot high solid.
Right.
Fence in a rear yard at least.
Along the easement.
Along the easement. Applicant's concern was that a fence on the inboard side of the easement line would isolate the easement. Now it's in a corridor between two, two.
But did we specifically prohibit?
And the visual there, so, so then, so then do we just simply prohibit fences on the inboard side of the easement?
Well, then how?
Not fences, you mean solid fences.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I think, who knows what somebody's gonna do with their pool in the backyard.
Right.
Right.
People might have small animals, children.
They have the right under the existing, that's why I recommended the HOA, because that's the only way that you could treat them separately.
Right.
Because otherwise they would be entitled to comply with the ordinance which would allow a solid fence. That was the only reason why I suggested amending the HOA.
Well, it's, it's a good idea, but I think, well, I haven't seen the HOA documents and I don't know whether they speak to, uh, those peculiar conditions or whether they just require their participation in the maintenance of the stormwater management systems.
I think the applicant was very generous in also offering that we didn't want solid fencing along the back line, right?
Yep.
They still see that, they could still do that, right?
Yeah, well, it seems to me that, that actually what, what you're doing here maybe is, is just, um, modifying the condition in a permissive way to permit the fencing as described. So in other words, it, it now may be installed in that location, may and shall, if they're gonna install it in the backyard.
Right.
But then, but then leave them to deal with their backyards outside of the conservation easement as they will.
So you could have a solid white fence.
Yes, you could.
And, and their property, within their property.
Yes, yes, you could. Well, well, as, as this discussion stands right now, unless the board sees fit to take action to prohibit that.
And that's, and that's the township's ordinance that would allow for that.
Yes, I know that.
Right, so I think that our hope is that if somebody is, is able to put and has to put an open fence in, in the easement area on the rear portion of the property, that would be an incentive for them to not put up an ugly, solid, white vinyl fence.
I mean, could we even do that?
That was our trade-off, though. We, we agreed to that.
I guess, I ask Mr. Schley if.
Right.
You can certainly restrict the, the fences in the, um, in the HOA documents that they have to.
That's why I suggest, that's why I suggest, that's the way to do it.
Look, you know.
I agree.
You can, you can, you can prohibit them from doing what they would otherwise be legally allowed to do under the ordinance, but when they purchase and they're subject to those, those HOA rules, they're, they can be treated differently than other.
They're already subject to different rules under.
Correct, exactly, exactly.
I'm fine if we're gonna do a fence around the perimeter of the property, whether someone chooses to keep it twenty-five feet in or on the property line, it'd be an open fence, um, subject to the description that you gave.
So, so the whole development would have an open fence?
Yes.
That's what the board would like, would like, I would recommend that a condition be that the applicant amend the HOA rules to, to, uh, limit the homeowners to whatever type of fencing that this board, if they adopt it, whatever the conditions are, that they be incorporated into the HOA.
He's afraid if there's an animal, like a small.
Just wanna ensure that property owners, if they have an animal, a dog or something, that an open fence isn't going to create a situation where they could go, you know, a small dog could go through certain types of open fences.
Right.
It depends what open fence is being.
Right, the dogs, my, my concern is actually different than that, and that is that somebody's got a dog or a couple of dogs and they need a solid fence because when they see stuff happening, they bark and they're a nuisance to the neighborhood. We've actually seen situations like this arise where people have had to put up a stockade fence so their dog can't see what's going on in the neighbor's yard.
I would, I would.
Which, which, it seems bizarre, but I mean, it happens.
So just let, let them follow the ordinance.
Yep.
Outside of the conservation easement, just like everybody else is.
That's what I was kinda thinking.
I think that's where I.
Just leave it simple.
You may have to do, you may just have to say they follow the ordinance, their property.
Yeah, I, I guess, to, to be consistent in our understanding of how this tree buffer is gonna operate, if it's, if the trees are gonna kinda chink together over the next coming years and it's not really gonna be a usable easement because of the, the sheer number, size and volume of the trees. I mean, how visually bad could it be from the other side if somebody put that, what, vinyl fence on?
Well, it's a nice neighborhood. I think people are gonna probably manage their yards in a very tasteful way.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would think so. So I would just say let them, let, let, let the ordinance that we have in place define what happens with fences on the easement.
And the HOA will, will also dictate what kind of fences you're able to put in your yard. So the HOA's not going to allow, and I don't know, I'm not familiar with, with the HOA regulations, but they're not going to allow for, I presume they're not going to allow for ugly fences or visually appealing.
I mean, that's up, I mean, we can't determine that at this point.
Yeah, that's up to them.
I, 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 I realize.
All right, so how does the board feel about within a, a homeowner's property, we let the ordinance rule? Mr. Demer.
Yes, I agree with that, yeah.
Mr. Crane?
I agree.
Mr. Estrangel? Mr. Ballen?
Yes.
Mr. Aiorio?
Yes.
Mr. Malick?
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine. So we're not even gonna talk to them. So I think, I think we have something.
We're all done with my memo.
What?
We're all done with my memo.
Okay, uh, Mr. Vanish?
I think they addressed everything in my memo. I had a series of, kind of bullet questions. Um, just to clarify, the fencing is gonna, is not gonna be the HOA's responsibility. It's gonna be, uh, the individual homeowner's responsibility.
Correct.
It's not gonna be installed as a single project, right? It's gonna be installed individually by homeowners. You're withdrawing the, uh, request for anything to do with the limitation on irrigation.
Correct.
So that, that limitation remains, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then they've addressed everything else.
Okay, so now I think that I'm now going, is your testimony finished, Mr. Silver?
Yes, thank you.
I'm now gonna open it up for public questioning of the applicant. I now open the public questioning portion. If you have a question for the applicant of what has just been discussed, please come up and identify yourself and ask your question. This is not a public comments section. It is just for questions pertaining to the applicant's testimony. Does anybody would like to ask questions? See none? Oh, you're coming up? Mr. Elian?
Yes.
Nice to see you again.
How are you?
Please identify yourself, your name and address, please.
Edward Elian, forty-two Wedgwood Drive.
Okay, if you could ask your questions, please?
So in the, uh, the fence that you're proposing, is there like a rendering or something that could be provided so we can all kinda like, all the property owners could weigh in on it? And is this fence contiguous to all the properties? I just wasn't clear on that. Is it just?
Would not be contiguous, it would be up to each individual.
Okay, so let's just say you put a fence up today and in ten years, somebody decides to put a fence up, that fence is no longer an option. How's that gonna blend in matching up the existing fences?
I would just say a black aluminum fence has been the test of time. There's really only a few options that anyone would put in. There are like three of them. Um, I'm more than happy to get you a copy of what our landscapers, it's gonna be probably done by the same people who did all the plantings for the.
Sir, are you familiar with the black fence on your neighbor adjoining you? He's got, sits back about fifty feet, there's a black, open fence. That's probably what.
That's, uh, two properties, or, that's property over from there.
Okay, I'm, I'm talking.
At the end of the cul-de-sac.
The one that butts.
The one that butts, uh, mound area. At the very corner of that. Yep.
You'll, you'll see a black fence. That, that's similar to what, a fifty percent open space.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions, the applicant? See none? Close the public question. Okay, now we're gonna go to public comment. I'm now gonna open it up for comments on the application. Anybody like to make comments on the application? See none? I will close the public comment section. Okay, you have the conclusion, Mr. Silver, before we go into deliberation.
I would just reiterate that if the modification is approved, that the board also recommend that the township committee consent to, uh, the amendment to the easement and that's really, truly, I thank you for your, for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion, deliberation, voting. Who wants to kick this off? We have an interesting. We have an interesting.
Can you tell us about the fence again?
Well, you could, you could say, you could say that your motion is to incorporate the two straw poles.
Landowners, you have to rely on strong suit people.
Okay, I'll kick something off, I think, you know, I, I wasn't aware that you weren't the one developing property initially, so I appreciate that you, that is somewhat of a changed circumstance, and I appreciate that you withdrew the irrigation and did make a consideration for the type of fence, so thank you for doing that.
Any other comments?
I, I would just rea, I think everybody heard me, but, I, I think from a planning standpoint, for a backyard perspective, releasing new homeowners, it's gonna be more spacious, won't feel boxed in, the, the, keep in mind, the board went through a lot of gyrations on this development.
Oh, yes, we did.
And it was, it's quite an interesting read, the hour it took me to read it, but, these homes have a 35-foot front yard setback, to give it a, a better distance from the existing homeowners. I mean, that's unheard of, even a half-acre lot, you might have 40-foot setback. I, I, also, when I observed, there's a tremendous amount of space, there's probably 150 feet space between the rear of Wedgewood houses to the property line. There's a, a very decent space, and I, I really don't, I, I don't, after four or five years, I don't think you're gonna see this fence, it's just gonna be covered with vines.
Whatever.
That, that, that 25 feet will expand in, in no time. I have these green giants in my yard, they're 20 feet high, and then 15 foot wide, so it's, I think the, the 25-foot buffer is gonna be a solid landscape buffer, and I, my real problem here is, if it was just a two-year maintenance on these trees, it'd be one thing, but, to try to have to rip down fences to take out a 75-foot-high tree that dies 50 years from now, I think is, is unrealistic. I appreciate what the board did, they really went through gyrations to help those, to right property owners, so, I, I think the board did whatever they could do, and wouldn't fault the board for one minor thing, perpetual care like a cemetery, overlooking it, so I, I would be, as you might guess, I'd be for this application.
Okay, would anybody else like to make any comments, or venture for a motion?
Well, I would venture for a motion, but I, there's a lot of details here, so it's, I, I would.
Would you like, Mr., would you like Mr. Toriello to review the?
Oh, boy, here we go.
I told you, I will be asking you this.
If I was to do, Mr. Drill, I'd have to get all, here, and say, okay, so, it, it would, a motion to withdraw the request for irrigation, that the application be conditioned, approval be conditioned on a black aluminum fence, minimum 50% open, pool compliant, installed six inches from the property line where possible, to the extent that it can't be, subject to the discretion of the engineer, to comply with all other existing conditions, and to make a recommendation, I heard something to the governing body. To modify the, a deed restriction on the conservation.
Do you have meets the easement code?
A deed of easement, yeah.
Yes, she has a pool compliant, but I think it's six inches from the property line in the conservation easement.
Okay, right.
And do we wanna say?
And the maximum height of six feet.
And do we wanna say black, or do we wanna say dark?
I would say black.
Black is the standard.
Black or brown.
Okay.
Black is the standard.
Is everybody here what they, we've been discussing for the last hour and a half?
And will not disturb trees, right, unless?
Well, he said that, but he didn't.
Oh, we say that, sorry.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion?
So I'll make the motion to approve the application with the conditions set forth by the board attorney.
And also to recommend to the township committee?
And also to recommend to the township committee.
That they, to amend the easement.
That they amended the deed of easement.
Easement.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Demersian, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oriol, any other comments? Oh, Ms. Kiefer, we're gonna have a vote now. Mr. Brownman?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Demersian?
Yes.
Mr. Oriol?
Yes.
Ms. Master Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Malick?
Yes.
Chairwoman Pardici, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board members.
That was the easy one.
Kurt was now a fence today.
Well, I'm gonna, we're gonna have a five-minute break, everybody, without recess for five minutes, please.
Thank you. And I'd like to say for the record that Mr. Crane has recused himself from this application and has left the, uh, meeting room.
Terrific.
Uh, is Mr. Michello your only witness?
Yeah, Mr. Tidalde is here, but I expect Rob can handle the testimony if needed. Mr. Tidalde will testify. He's from the USGA.
Okay. Do you want him sworn in?
Might as well swear them both, just in case.
Okay, so why, everybody who's going to be sworn in, please stand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, okay, your first, Ms. Michello, good evening. Okay, Mr. Malman.
Do you care to hear his qualifications as an engineer? They haven't changed since the last time he was here.
Oh, yes, we do have to hear your qualifications.
All right, yes. So I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I received my BS in civil engineering from NJIT in 1998. And I've appeared before over 100 boards in the state of New Jersey in regards to civil engineering and land planning, um, and, and site planning for, um, projects ranging from commercial to residential to golf courses to solar and, and so forth.
And you're familiar with this site and you testified before this board in connection with this property before?
Yes, I've been accepted as a witness for this application in the past as, as well.
Okay. Does somebody have any questions on Mr. Michello's qualifications? Any member of the public? You're so qualified, and I'd like to ask, did anybody go to the property?
No.
I've been to the property before when I was on a, um, tree permit application.
Okay, but not recently?
No.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
I did. I drove, I drove up to the property and sat in the parking lot and reviewed the documents.
Okay.
I don't really have much to say about a detailed description of the property.
Okay, but you, you did a drive off.
I drove up today, bought a hat there once, a US Open hat.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Merchant. Go ahead, Mr. Michello.
Madam Chairwoman, I did review the, the, I, I, I visited the property via Google Earth and, and Google Maps, but what was interesting is you are in fact able to see the construction of the improvements over time and in fact some of the changes to the parking layout. You can see where the, how the original parking was laid out, the partial construction of the, 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 the plan that, that is the as-built, and, um, it makes it pretty clear what the intended, uh, changes.
And we'll walk you through that tonight for those who haven't seen that before. That's our exhibits this evening. So we've given the exhibits to Cindy, um, and I guess, David, you have them as well. So they're, they're already set up in your system. So, Mr. Michello, why don't you?
So I guess we'll enter this as the, the presentation as Exhibit A1?
Correct. I've given a hard copy to Cindy as well.
Okay. Has that been marked as A1?
We can do that right now if you'd like.
Yeah, so I think we're just gonna have it on the TVs and it's not working with the screen.
This screen is gonna be out for a while.
Okay.
All right, so what I'd like to start off with first, and I'll describe each of the sheets as I go through them, but everything's part of A1 as the exhibit. So first exhibit I have here is Neighborhood Aerial exhibit. It's dated August 2nd, 2022. And this is the 20, actually 2020, 2021 state aerials that we used as the basis for this. So actually what's, what's on here is actually what's constructed out there now. Um, and we'll get into that in a little more detail. But for the purposes of the site itself, um, the property is Block 9601, Lot 5.01. It's a 68.537 acres in size, and it's, the yellow outline properties you see on the map here, um, irregular in shape that goes around. It has frontage on Liberty Corner Road to the east, um, Douglas Road to the north, which is also the municipal boundary line with the Borough of Farm Hills, as you can see in orange on here. Um, to the south is Leighton Road, um, and then to the, I'm sorry, to the west is Leighton Road, and to the south is Mount Prospect Road. Um, the, as I mentioned, the main property is Lot 5.01. The USGA also owns Lot 4.02, which is this rectangular shaped lot here. However, it's not part of the application this evening, but they do own it. Both the main USGA property itself and that smaller parcel is in the GH or the Gulf Heritage Zone. And that's that dashed outline you see on the plan here that goes around, um, both those lots. The USGA also owns property to the southwest of it. It's the, what was always referred to as the Pine Estate or the Pine Lots. Um, and they've taken ownership of that in the last couple of years. And it's basically all the lots between the property and Leighton Road and Mount Prospect Road, except for this one lot here, which is Lot 10, um, which is not owned by the, uh, by the USGA. But everything else that you see on the map here, all these lots where my pointer is, is all owned by the, uh, by the USGA as, as, and they took ownership of that within the last two, two to three years. And that's all in your, your R1 zone. It's not in the GH zone, it's in the R1 zone. The main access to the property is off Liberty Corner Road where my pointer is, where the driveway is here. And then there's a secondary, a maintenance access that comes off of Liberty Corner as well, um, where my pointer is here. And then there's also a, a third driveway that goes out to Douglas Road that was also at one time part of the Pine Estate, but that's really more for back access. It's not used by, um, the public or the employees to come in and out of the property. It's more, it's more, it's closed off to, um, to access, but it can be used if, if need be. Um, in terms of some of the history of the property, just going back in terms of what's, what's occurred here on site before we get into the current approvals. The property was actually approved by way of variance back in, um, by the Board of Adjustment back in 1971 for the USGA. It's been expanded numerous times over the years. Um, recently, in the last nine years, back in 2013, um, the museum on the property was expanded with the Jack Nicklaus Room. That was the last addition to the museum that was done. Um, and then in 2015, the property, including the Lot 4.02 that I pointed out, was rezoned into your Gulf Heritage Zone. So that's when that occurred. So basically taking, making, making a permitted use, um, zone now as opposed to being a use variance every time the USGA would come in for an application. That was back in 2015. Um, in 2016, started a series of approvals on the property for modifications to the site. So in 2016, we got an approval to renovate the existing administration building, relocate some generators, and, and do some utility work on the site. In 2017, we modified that approval to basically expand the administration building with a new addition, um, increase the size of the parking lot from what, from the existing to 351 parking spaces and all the associated site improvements that go along with that. Right after that approval was granted, we came back in and modified the approval to allow for phasing of the parking, I'll show that momentarily, um, and to also allow for, um, modifications to the hardscape or landscaping that occurred on the property from what was originally, originally approved. And so, just to go through those, those, those items. This plan that I have up here, this is entitled Overall Site Plan Rendering. This is actually dated May 16th, 2017. This was the approval that was granted for, you had the existing administration building, which is an L-shaped building here in light gray. And I'll actually zoom in a little bit to this portion of the site. So here's the existing administration building. The existing museum is shown here on the plan. Um, and we had gotten approval to add a three-story building addition to, to the, to the, to the, to the building, um, redo the loading dock area, and reconfigure the existing parking and access drive in the front of the museum um, to, to basically, you know, reconfigure that, that, um, access, provide a more formal loop around the front of the museum, and then have all of the hardscape that you see here around the administration building, um, patios, walkways, landscaping and the like. That was all part of that approval in, in, um, April of 2017. At the same time, the USGA realized that they may be making, they, they wanted to come back and phase some of the parking that was occurring on the site and how they were gonna build out the site, because they weren't sure if they wanted to construct this as shown on the plan here at that time. So we came back in a couple months later, and what we asked for approval on, and this is, this was also an exhibit back then. This is entitled Interim Parking Plan Rendering, dated May 16th, 2017. And you, and you can see on this plan here, we maintained most of the existing driveways. We just added in, in the darker gray, and I'll zoom into the area, what we called interim parking at that time, um, to get to about 325 parking spaces. These, these dark gray parking spaces here. Um, and we basically just cut off all of the hardscape that was going around the front of the site here and added a sidewalk, just so that we would have a interim plan for parking and not redo the rest of the parking lot, but complete all of the, oops, sorry, went the wrong way. But complete all of the improvements. Restart the slideshow, hold on. Sorry.
So all the building improvements were done?
Right. So based, so this plan that you're looking at here, this interim parking plan rendering, basically represents the as-built conditions that are on the property. You know, around the building, with, with the, with the, with the, uh, walkways, with the landscaping that's shown around the building here, the reconfiguration of the loading dock area, the sidewalks in the front of the building, and then the interim parking that was constructed here, um, in addition to some minor improvements out at the intersection. This represents what's constructed today on the property. And it was all essentially completed about three years ago, three and a half years ago. I'm sorry, Mr. Malman, you had a question?
No, that's fine. So this, this is what's there today, essentially. That was my question.
Correct. This is what's there today. And so what we're looking to do now is, is modify those improvements and basically make permanent those, those temporary parking improvements while also making some modifications to, 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 to the, to the site as well. So the next exhibit I have here is Overall Site Plan Rendering. This is dated August 2nd, 2022. And what we're showing here is basically the site with Liberty Corner Road on the right, north being up. Here's the administration building, the museum building, the access drive coming in off of Liberty Corner, the Loop Road in front of the museum, the main parking area, and the loading dock. We have the Test Center Building back here, and then a small maintenance building just in the upper left-hand corner of, of, of the plan. So that represents the, the, the improvements on the property. And what we're looking to do is essentially realign the existing driveway, and I'll, and I'll, I'll show it on a highlighted plan, make permanent the parking that was, that was temporarily installed, and basically formalize the ADA parking spaces. When we did the temporary parking plan a couple of years ago, the ADA spaces were only temporarily constructed at that time. And so we didn't have enough ADA spaces on the site to meet the current, to meet the requirements of the ADA code for ADA parking at that time. They were only temporary. We knew we were coming back to do additional parking. So now we're formalizing those ADA spaces, adding the side, the necessary sidewalks and the connectivity to the administration building and to the museum building as part of that work to, to complete that. Um, and if I go to the next, um, sheet, this basically highlights the areas of the improvements that we're, we're looking to do, and I'll zoom in on this. Here's the museum building. Here's the administration building in the upper left here. So we're gonna realign the driveway and take out a secu, a, a series of S bends that are in there now that make the, and that make, coming into the site a little circuitous to, to, to enter, reconfigure the intersection with the Loop Road that comes from the museum, formalize those parking spaces that are adjacent to the existing parking lot, add some curbing that's not out there now on, on a couple of the parking stalls to, to formalize those parking spaces. And then, like I, like I mentioned, just reconfigure the ADA spaces so that we have the, the proper number of ADA spaces on site to meet the ADA, ADA requirements. And then install a sidewalk that connects to the museum building and connects into the sidewalks that go to the administration building. So in total, on the original approvals, we were, we were looking at 351 parking spaces that we were proposing. With this modified plan, we're only, we're only proposing 324 spaces now in terms of what the USGA's needs are for the site.
And what's required there?
Required is 274 under, under the ordinance.
You will access that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just to comment on that, I mean, obviously this prior plan was done before COVID, when everyone came to work every single day. So the working environment has changed. One of the reasons why the number of spaces is reduced for the USGA is that, fair to say?
That, that's correct, yes. That they realize that 351 is not needed anymore in terms of what the site can support, or what they need to support for the buildings, and, and 324 spaces seems to be more in line with what they're anticipating in terms of, in terms of site usage.
Is that also because there have been stories about, uh, potential functions moving to North Carolina?
The USGA announced, I guess, two or three years ago that the test center is moving to Pinehurst. But that's the, maybe, Rob, you can show that. It's up in the back corner of the property. That's where they evaluate golf equipment, golf balls, things like that. That's moving to Pinehurst. The balance of the site, the office building, the museums, the state.
And, and no staff in the, those buildings?
Yeah, there were about 15 people, give or take, in the, in the test center.
Okay.
That will be relocated with that, in theory.
So loss of 20, reduction of 25 spaces to account for 15 of them and keeping it, you know, taking a few extra off as well.
The bigger issue, frankly, is just the working environment has changed. People don't go to work every day anymore. They're more virtual, and that's gonna continue as far as we know.
And then also too, in looking at the, the previous design to this design, instead of reconstructing all those additional parking spaces, utilizing as much of the existing parking lot that we have out there already. And basically, the other thing the USGA is gonna be doing here, while it's not as easy to see on these exhibits, is they're gonna repay, mill and repave the rest of the parking lots and the access roads that are out there. Um, we made, we paved the front entry road originally, and we did the paving work out by the, um, loading dock when we built those, but the rest of the parking lot needs to be milled and repaved. And then, of course, the new work that we're gonna do here at the realignment of the driveway will be new paving. And then also, some of the, some of the existing access drives around the site, they also need to be milled and repaved as well, just as part of regular maintenance.
It's not gonna be changed, it's gonna be upgraded.
Right. And to answer a question that was in Mr. Bannish's letter about widening them, we're not gonna modify any widths. We're just gonna repay, mill and repave as they are in place.
And that question was asked because that service driveway violates that 50-foot buffer requirement? And if they were increasing the width of the road, that would trigger the need for another variance, but because they're keeping it the same and they're just resurfacing it, milling it, resurfacing it, that issue goes away. The only difference there is the, uh, is the southerly realignment of the main driveway that we were talking about in a minute.
Yep. Correct. The other thing I wanna point out-
Have you seen our script?
Yes, it has, it looks like. The other thing I wanna point out was, um, um, there was a comment in Mr. Schley's letter, um, one of, one about the striping of the existing parking lot as it relates to, I'll go back to one slide here, as it relates to fire lane access. Um, this was actually brought up back in 2017. Um, fire access to the building comes down the main driveway and goes through this section of the, um, main parking lot, the back of the loading dock area. That's the fire department access to the rear part of the building. Um, when we got the prior approvals, we agreed to restripe those, those parking spaces to, um, actually be, um, 9 by 17 in depth. So we'd have a 26-foot wide drive aisle through the middle here to, to comply with your ordinance at the time. As we understand it now, that ordinance has been interpreted, um, slightly differently, and we're gonna go back to the original 9 by 18 striping that was there with the 24-foot drive aisle as noted in Mr. Schley's letter. So we'll, we'll make that note on the plans.
So it's fire access?
It's still adequate for fire access.
From 26 to 24?
Correct. And the stalls will be 9 by 18.
And what is the access to the museum? Is it just that loop?
The museum access, if, if you come in here, it's gonna be a one-way loop. So you, you, you drive around here, drive around the loop, but we're gonna have some parking that's gonna be over here for the, for the museum guests. Um, and then they would exit back out around the loop to, to leave the site. And there's actually two spaces here as well, they're existing spaces, um, that are, that are used. And they'll be, um, if, if they're small, um, I'll say, um, small visitor buses that may show up every once in a while. We park them in the parking lot for, for access. But the, the loop is primarily for the museum. Employees drive through and then park, you know, in, in the main parking lot for how they use the, uh, how they use the property. We do have a drop-off area where my, where my pointer is here for, um, anyone that may be, um, having car service, take them to the site. Um, and a drop-off for the administration building, um, you know, in order to get to the, they've dropped off here to walk the administration building. So we incorporate that into the plan as well. Um, in terms of landscaping, we are actually, in terms of tree replacement, this goes back to even the original site plans, um, back in 2016, 2017. Um, there was a tree replacement that was required at that time. Um, in accordance with, uh, Mr. Schley's review letter and just confirming some of the numbers, under the 2017 approval, um, 99 trees were to be removed, requiring 281 replacement trees. However, only 85 trees were actually removed as part of that original work. Um, so now we're only requiring 233 replacement trees. Um, 74 of them have been planted. We still have to plant 159. Um, and that's what's shown on the plan, if I zoom out here. The circles that are the darker green circles, both along the, the northern property line, around the administration building, um, in the existing parking lot, and along the main access drive, we're gonna supplement with landscaping to meet the tree replacement requirement. So we're spreading them out around the property, um, to, to meet that 159 trees that are required. Oh, and, and also there was a comment in Mr. Schley's letter about EV charging stations. Um, there are actually two EV charging stations on the property now. They're over by the, um, the test center parking lot area. There's two spaces here. They were put in when we did the prior cycling application. Um, and as of now, based on USGA's use of those, they're adequate for the property. So we don't feel the need to have to add any more at this time. If it turns out that USGA staff is, it will, you know, needs additional charging stations, the USGA will add those as time goes on. But for right now, there's two on the property today that are adequate for the, uh, for the use of the staff.
And there's no triggering under the new ordinance for EVs?
He hasn't hit the threshold, um, for the number of new parking spaces to, to, uh, trigger the need for more EV spaces.
Thank you.
Because he's only increasing the number of spaces by one.
How about the variance, Rob? Let's talk about that.
Yes. So let me go back to, actually, this plan is a good one to use.
Can you show us the existing driveway and how you're shifting it?
Yep. Actually, let me go back one. Just wanna point out. Yeah, thank you. So on this plan, this is the interim parking, um, plan rendering. You see the, the existing driveway comes around the bend here, and you'll see it has this double reverse S curve that comes through here like this as you enter into the site. You can just zoom back into that so everyone can see it. It's on the bottom of the page here. But my point is I come in here, and you have a curve, and then another quick S curve to an intersection with the museum, and then another S curve back to the parking lot. It's, it's circuitous as you're coming in through the property. And so what we'd like to do is, is clean that up. And that was part of the, when you look at the, um, site plan, go back to the next page. By taking that, those couple of bends out and providing a nice, smooth curve and transition into the parking area and providing this controlled intersection here coming from the museum to really make the entrance, as you're coming in off Liberty Corner Road, to be more gracious and, and, and smooth flowing as you come into the property. And then lining with, lining it with the trees that we have now to really give it a nice, a nice feel to it as you enter onto the property. This is the main entrance for not only employees coming to the USGA, but every visitor that comes to the museum is gonna be coming down this driveway into the site. So by doing this and, and making this modification, we are triggering a variance for the setback distance from the edge of the driveway to the corner point of the property with Lot, um, with Lot 8. Um, and, and even though the USGA owns that lot, there's still a buffer variance there. And it's, um, we're asking for a relief, um, based on Mr. Schley's comments, to a setback distance of 27.9 feet, where 50 foot is required for this section of driveway right in here where my pointer is.
It really just affects the little corner of that-
Small little sliver of it, correct.
Just affects that small corner of the neighboring lot.
Is it previously even compliant?
The, the previous driveway was compliant. The existing driveway was compliant, yes. But we're asking for this deviation so we can have this, this nice, smooth curve as you come off of, as you come off of Liberty Corner, you come around one curve, you come over another curve, and then you have a third curve, but they're, they're nice and gradual as you drive into the site. Um, and, and then you approach that first intersection over here where the museum or employees will go park.
And of course, emergency vehicles would use this entrance as well in this revised driveway location.
Also too, it happens by getting, by eliminating that, that, those double back S curves. It makes it better for delivery vehicles coming in. Um, there's still some, some larger trucks that were going off of the road in those areas. So, but also by smoothing out the curb and adding curbing to this area, we're, we're basically keeping the vehicles on the, on the, uh, on the pavement where they, where they belong.
Have you seen any negative impact from this variance?
No.
Do any trees get removed from that?
No, as in, they, they do not. We're actually working it through the trees. There's existing trees here, 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 and they're not being removed. We're actually adding more trees along the driveway to really frame it, um, like, like, you know, like a nice tree-lined drive as you come into, as you come into the site.
Is there a house on that property?
No, there's, there's not.
Why don't you go back to the overall aerial, kind of put it in context?
So here's the, here's the corner point that we're talking about on the plan here. And here's the, the existing lot, which is Lot 8, which there's no, there's no homes on that lot.
Is that, that's also, is that also your property?
Yes.
Yeah, it's owned by the USGA. It's in a residential zone. It's, it's owned by USGA. So, Rob, you've seen-
Is the forest management plan on that? It's under bar line. Is that right?
Yes. Yes.
You've seen the reports? We have the reports from Mr. Bannish, from Mr. Schley, the engineer. Any comments or any objections to the, to comments in those reports?
Um, no, uh, we can comply with all, with all the comments that are, that are listed in those reports.
Okay. And all the memos?
Yes, all the memos.
Okay.
Yeah.
How do you want to show that access road?
So the access road isn't used for deliveries? It's that road that's used for deliveries?
It's actually, so here's the access road off of Liberty Corner. It's actually used for deliveries to the museum.
Only.
And, um, and then there's a, then there's a smaller access road that really is used by maintenance personnel to go around the back of the administration building and come down this way. This over here, up to this point, is the emergency access for fire trucks to get to the side of the administration building. But they can also, you can also bring fire trucks in to the museum building along the, along this access road as well to this point here. And that's the loading dock to the museum building. So it's used for both deliveries to the museum and, and, and for the loading, and for maintenance folks at the museum.
Will you please point out those two nodes of supplemental landscape that need to be provided? Why you're doing that right there on that southerly problem?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple gaps in the existing wooded tree line that goes, that's adjacent to this residential lot. So we're filling in those gaps with, with landscaping here, here, and here. And that was part, and that was consistent with the prior plans that, that were, that were approved.
And you're also proposing to use stormwater?
Yes, oh, sorry, thank you, Mr. Clever, I forgot to mention stormwater management. So, stormwater management was designed under the previous applications. We had, there's an existing detention basin on site that manages runoff. There were dry wells installed for the administration building. And at the time, there was a basin designed for the parking area that was going over here, but because the parking was only temporary, we didn't build the basin at that time. However, now that the parking's going to be permanent, we're curbing it, we are going to construct the basin that's adjacent to the property line, that's shown on my, on the plan here where my pointer is. And then because we're going to curb the driveway up to this point here, we are proposing another bioretention basin in, in the front of the site to provide water quality for that realigned portion of the, of the driveway.
And the basin that is close to the proper line of variance was granted for that because it's within the buffer, is that correct?
Correct. Under the prior approval, the variance was granted for, in, in the buffer.
And they, they need to do stormwater?
That they do, the two and a half acres, the bioretention, water quality, they meet all those, they meet all those requirements.
I have no further questions, I think that covers it.
Yep.
Board, do you have any questions of Mr. Malman? Or Mr. Michelle? No? Okay. Or professionals, do you have any further questions of Mr. Michelle?
I've addressed all the comments in my report. I think, I don't know how deep you want to go on the variance testimony for the relief that's required for straightening out the driveway given that they own the adjacent line.
I would look at it as a C two. There's really no hardship here, but in terms of C two, it's a better access, promotes safe vehicular access. Desirable visual environment, it's going to be very attractive with the new allay of trees, so.
I think the safety, the safety argument is sufficient really to provide a firm basis for promoting the general welfare, I mean, I'll say the general welfare. I'm upset on that, I think.
I, I, I disagree, except the fact that because it's their adjacent property, it's owned by them, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think it's to take the issue of driving up that driveway the way it is. It's my opinion.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for, no?
Apart from that, that was the only thing that I thought would be a little more of a definition.
Okay, and Mr. Schley, Mr. Clever? Okay.
I just, I mean, my comments were addressed, just one question on the board's standard colonization requirements as far as getting work started on this, do you want to do it within two years?
They want to do it this year if possible.
They want to do it this year, actually.
You're going to do it within two years?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I will then open it up for public questioning of Mr. Michelle. Yes, please come and ask your question.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Sean Lynch, I live at fifty-six Liberty Corner Road, so I'm just north of the service road. And I had a question when I was looking at the, the site map about easement that fronts Liberty Corner Road there.
Can you come closer to the microphone?
Yeah, to the microphone, please.
Sure. So, I had a question regarding an easement that appears on the site map, and I wasn't certain if it's part of the, it would be here, right here, part of the, the overall USGA?
I don't know whether it's an easement?
I believe so, yes. So, I live directly across the street from that easement, which fronts Liberty Corner Road, and there are a series of trees that are about a hundred feet tall that are, in essence, dead. So, I was going to ask for consideration if they could be addressed. I can share photos of the, but it seems to be, they're all part. And, you know, the wind blows, any storms, trees are coming down on our property, right on the front, front yard, so if it is part of the USGA, I would just ask for consideration of maintenance on those trees or removal.
The easement that he's referring to is actually an easement on Lot four point oh three, which is the resident, let me just pull up, I think you can see it on here.
So, this is not part of your property?
No, but this, this home site here, Lot four point oh three, there's an easement, and you guys see, it's hard to see the black dash lines on this map here, runs along the frontage of that site, and there's a small little portion of it, a minor little square, that, that encroaches on the corner of the, on the USGA's property, right on the side here, but the rest of it's-
Twenty-five feet? Rob, how far do you think it encroaches onto the USGA property?
I think it's thirty feet, it's a corridor.
Looks like, looks like it's twenty-five by thirty, thirty deep or something? Yeah, so that, that's, you know, that's on, just on the corner of our site, and we're not proposing to do anything there. But the rest of it's on the property across the, the residential property that we don't own, that we don't control.
As the working property?
Yes, the working property, yes.
Okay, so that's their property?
Yeah, this, this is their easement, yeah.
Okay, understood. So, I don't know.
How does a homeowner, just for my own edification, handle if there's a conservation easement that's not being taken care of? Do they go to the zoning office and lodge complaint?
Some, well, the, 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 the restriction that you were dealing with tonight does provide some flexibility for the township engineer to make the call as to what kind of activity can occur within the easement. If it's, if it's not specifically called out as permitted in easement, granting the engineering department with discretion, then they've got to appeal to the governing body for activity that's not permitted.
So, this homeowner could go and look at the easement documentation-
Yes.
-for that property, that would be the starting point?
It would be the starting point, right, to find out what the-
Remedy.
What the approach could be, yeah, remedy could be, yes. Obligation could be to maintain it or the preservation. It's similar type of consequences to what we talked about earlier, but except for the maintenance part, preservation of the scene and corridor.
But is there, is there any obligation by a homeowner for, for safety issues? It's a, like a-
I don't think so, the, just because there's an easement there, I mean, if there's an obligation without the easement, I don't know what that is, but I, I don't think even advanced to it. I can't be certain of that.
So, this homeowner can go look at the-
Wasn't intended to easement to actually actively manage it, just to preserve it.
I see. So, you have-
But if, but if a condition within the easement presented a dangerous condition to a, a neighboring homeowner, they may have some latitude to go into the easement to prevent damage to their own property or to make sure they maintain-
Oh, and as our owner of the easement, yeah, there's usually a provision in there that you, you send out certain trees in there, however, if there's a dead tree or something like that-
Right.
-that, with discretion, you would attach it to the town.
Well, that's what I was getting at.
Generally, those easements are do-nothing restrictions?
If the owner wanted to do something.
I have a conservation easement as well, and within the maintenance agreement, there is, within that agreement, there's a, you know, an allowance for maintenance of, you know, trees and-
It's a little different, so I don't know. This is more about the use and preserving, not of the land being environmentally sensitive, but preserving-
I'm concerned about liability or property, something like that.
So, your starting point is to look-
It looks like, based on Google, it's overgrown all the power lines.
That's right.
Yeah, maybe worth, and think the power company, they usually maintain them periodically.
So, what do you recommend?
Looking at the easement for the property, the specific easement for that property, number one. Number two, contacting the power company. But first, look at the easement and talk to the town, and then-
I did reach out to the town, Brian Pippen, and took a look at it. Reached out to the county, so I was certain that it was going to be where the labor and I, so I just don't worry, worry to ask, so.
Well, I do know it doesn't, the impact-
Doesn't impact current application.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're, we just tried to help you a little bit, but we can't really encroach upon his tone.
Dave, can, can he call you maybe and get this sorted out, help me, give, point him in the right direction?
Was that your only question?
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Michelle? Mr. Edelstein? Please come up and identify yourself.
Hi, Edelstein, one seven two, Riverside Drive. Just a easy question, so, I was just curious, you're reducing your, your parking, the impervious, do you know what the percentage you're reducing it by?
Actually, yeah, the impervious coverage is actually being reduced from, and I'm going off what the approved impervious coverage was, because that was a higher number. Have the number right here, just for the record. I can get to the chart. We, the proposed, the original plan was eleven point nine eight percent coverage, and the interim, I'm sorry, the original plan was eleven point nine eight percent, and the final plan that proposed this evening is eleven point one seven percent. So, it's about point, point eight reduction in impervious coverage. Point eight percent. We're allowed up to thirteen percent lock coverage with a one percent additional for walking paths up to fourteen percent. So, thirteen is the allowable for all paved and impervious surfaces, and we're at eleven point one seven.
And I just had one quick, I wasn't sure, was there a comment from the mine management commission on this?
I did not see anything.
There was a short memo, I think it was just-
A memo that said nothing.
Yeah, it basically said, make sure you do the drainage properly.
Yeah, it talked about BMPs on the stormwater, which we're actually doing, under the state, under the state township standards, already.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Michelle? So, I'll close the portion.
Thank you.
Okay, so, now I've got to do public comment. I'll open for public comment on this application. Seeing none, close the public comment portion. So, now we're into, any final questions of Mr. Malman or Mr. Michelle? Okay, deliberation voting, people. Who wants to roll this?
I guess you're looking this way, or somebody to stand up.
Do you want to try?
I think the applicant has put together a very thorough presentation, and the impact to the local community seems very minimal, seems to be designed to improve on the property itself, and maybe they'll have some future expansion, more customers.
So, are you-
I am in favor of the application as presented.
Any other comments? Anybody like to make a motion?
And this is on the C two, right?
Yes, this is on the C two.
And for cycling approval, obviously.
Right.
The C two is the variance.
Yes, approve the application, including the variance. Sure. Madam Chairwoman, I'll make a motion to approve the application, including the C two variance. Okay.
Can, can I add, and, and with the applicant agreeing to comply with all conditions set forth in the planner's report dated August first, two thousand twenty-two, the engineer's report dated seven twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two, and the township planner's report dated July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two?
Madam Chairwoman, motion revised to reflect the recommendation of Board Attorney. Thank you. And a second?
I will second.
Okay. Brokaw, Ms. Kiefer? Mr. Malman? Yes. Mr. DeBergen?
Yes.
Mr. Viorello?
Yes.
Ms. Master Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Chairwoman Padiucci? Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Go.
Have a good night.
That was really easier.
Um, any, any comments from members?
Right.
Comments from staff? I'd like to ask Mr. Banish what's up in two weeks.
Well, I'm going to go back to you with at least a couple of plan elements complete, addressing your prior comments.
Anything new?
Uh, no, not at that point.
Okay.
So, it's master plan only next?
Yes, that's the second meeting in a month, so that will be on the sixteenth of August. Okay, and with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
I will, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Chair can't make motions.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and Mr. DeBergen will give you a second.
I will second that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.